Can you guys hear me in the hearing room?
Hi Ron, can you hear me?
Yeah, are you in the hearing room?
Yeah, I am on from my phone because I'm having computer issues. Not a good morning for that.
Okay, I need, I think if Doug's in the room, can he go to the laptop and get everything hooked up?
Okay, actually I'm not in there, I'll head down right now and see what we can do.
Well, hold on, I, I have Doug's number then. All right, if you're not in the hearing room, I'll call Doug and we'll get everything set up.
I thought it's number two. Thank.
All right.
I thought Gina was coming over.
Yeah, she, everyone's down there, let me, let me talk to Doug.
Okay.
Ron, we're here. Doug's here.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I can hear everything, is everything working in there?
Yeah.
There's no weird echo.
No, you, you sound good, nice and clear.
Let me see the dials.
Good question.
Sure.
Don't even have.
Uh, let's see.
Camera two.
We're not on that and I don't know why yet.
Video.
Hang on. Yeah.
All right. I see Scott. Yeah, it looked like it worked for a second. Everything working Doug?
Want to everyone sorry for the abbreviated line, set of five, I can call the Department of Spokane County Planning Commission today as long as the fifteenth. Uh, so now AM. First order we took to do is we introduce our commission, we'll start. Bonnie Edwards.
Hold on, so it struck.
Well, I, I'll say.
Pete Rayner.
That's Stephen Paul, your chair, he is my vice chair. Uh, first, uh, let me do a little, a little announcement here, the public may participate in person or remotely by utilizing our. Utilizing, utilizing our web link and public conference lines star nine to raise hands, start six to speak. Individuals are limited to one three-minute comment period for an item, please keep your comments specific to the current agenda time. Chat is not supported, okay? The, uh, the next order of business is what we call open forum. And this is a time and opportunity for the citizens of Spokane County to come before, so for items that are not empty, not on this agenda today. Would anybody like to speak in my commission? Sir. Name, address. Two to three minute scenario episode.
My name is Greg Miley. My mainly address is Bangle. The north side of our property, ten acre property is Spokane. We farm. My wife and I are both retired. With the exception, then we have Blue's Ridge events. Which we brought to you before and discussed some of the opportunities for a conditional use permit. I'd like to thank this commission for the reviews and the time that you've given us. And to that event, and to answer a question that Ron Valencia had, Commissioner Valencia about public input on our website. We have some issues that were some items we'd like to offer for public record.
While we're doing that, let me make mention that Mr. Logan Compton Rowley of our esteemed commission has joined us via, via the internet, welcome Logan.
These exhibits represent three of our neighbors who have commented about our facility. Having witnessed a couple events. First, we're waiting for your decision on long term. A conditional use permit allows us to move forward with the advent of following the rules and regulations that the commission and the county sets forth. We would ask that you approve a conditional use permit. And also look at other facilities with the same type of of valor because every event is different. And some are better than others. So our suggestion is to conditional use permit when it comes to this opportunity. Thank you, any questions?
Uh, but. But, no. Thank you. All right, thank you, thank you, did you want to speak off there?
We, we just wanted to say, we do have a video of our property. And it's a zone, it's a drone photo video. And it isn't up now, but it will be at the next zoning meeting.
It's online.
If you already have it, you've already approved it, it's just that I don't know where it was and I'm not sure anyone knows where it is other than Ella. But it was already approved and yes, it's online, it begins our website. It's the very beginning of our website, the drone video. We wanted to have it up there and all we talked today, but.
We weren't able to do.
We can't access it today.
Not today.
Okay.
Maybe now's time.
All right. Thank you for being here, buddy. Would anyone else like to come and speak around, so we're not on this agenda today and now's the time? Anybody online? Are you able to check online for us?
I don't see anybody online, do you?
Yeah, we got to go. I think there's a screen you go through and choose a whole box of them, probably right there, how do we do that?
Yeah, six participants right there.
Yeah, you gotta get back to here first.
Yeah, that's the one, that's the box. It is just.
There.
Oh, yeah.
No one. Okay, thanks, well, let's move on. Today we have some workshops. Yes.
Can I get a clarification?
Uh, Scott, can I get a clarification on his request for a conditional use, is this the typical procedure of requesting it to come to the board first or is it to your department?
No, but in our discussions with the prior applicant where it was looking at using it as a limited use in the zoning code similar to what's allowed in the small tract A sections, uh, which is essentially the Green Bluff, uh, group. Uh, we have looked at that and we've also looked at, at instead of making it a limited use in rural traditional, which if you recall the map, rural traditional is spread totally throughout the county. Uh, we're considering that same use, but doing it as a conditional use permit in the rural zones. And that way it would be site-specific, not zoning-specific, and so each applicant would have a specific conditional use permit. Uh, they could have, well, there would be a, there would be a list of conditions that we would bring to you for your review and approval. And then the hearing examiner would uh, evaluate how they meet those conditions and add any that seemed appropriate, but it's, so it would be an individual permit rather than a zoning change.
The, uh, that was in front of us this morning, are they aware of how this procedure works and?
I, I, I don't know, we, the point from our side is we will be bringing that language to you to create those conditions as a zoning, uh, amendment. And if you recommend that to the board, if the board agrees, then this applicant and others could apply for that conditional use permit under those circumstances. So we're, we're creating the upfront, uh, regulatory system to allow for that conditional use permit, it doesn't yet exist.
Thank you for clarifying it. Understood, Mr. Marley is making a case for application of the law, we have to be supportive of the change in tax to allow this to go forward with Tricia and the other people who have been before certain times.
Right.
Greg.
That's absolutely what we're doing. We're part of the movement, if you will.
Yeah, and I think they came thinking it would be on the agenda, but it wasn't, so we um, they came, they spoke during the open forum, I think was perfectly fine. And from there, we'll, we'll address it, I guess the text amendment will be coming up next.
Next week. It will not be on the twenty-ninth, but we'll likely have something for you at one of the September meetings.
Thank you. There you go. Thanks for asking. Your staff will be contacting him, the applicant, and tell them the procedure and how it's going to be handled in a time frame.
We will be posting that on our web and anyone that has given us an email or a contact will be over.
Hello, Mr. Chesney, I just want to make sure that I understand, thank you. If the intention, or at least the idea, is going forward, if it was to be approved, the conditional use permit could be renewed. Uh, definitely.
Once a conditional use permit is granted, it has no expiration unless the conditions are violated. And then it can be, uh, then it can be rescinded.
So. Another document.
Yes.
Okay, just checking, thank you.
All right, um, six eight zero zero one two zero two four. Um, I'll let you explain that, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, we have a, a brief summary presentation that I believe Ron can bring up for us. And you've, you've heard about this, uh, a few times, uh, we are here for kind of a last workshop with you. Uh, this zoning text amendment along with the others that you've heard over the spring and summer will be coming back to you August twenty-ninth for a public hearing and we will be asking for your recommendation, uh, to the board after that. This is the, uh, what we've called a small-scale meat processing uh, option, uh, as you know, it doesn't exist in Spokane County, uh, ranchers and, and animal husbandry folks have made it clear that this would be desirable for the, uh, county, and so we're moving it forward, next slide please. And you can see, uh, here are some of the considerations, uh, this would, again, rather than being a permitted or limited use in the zoning code would be a conditional use so that each operation would be evaluated on its own with a set of conditions. Uh, next slide. One of the things we have learned, uh, in investigating this is there are two options for making this happen, and one is a state-regulated version and the other is a USDA or US Department of Agriculture. The USDA option allows for retail sale of the, uh, processed meats. A state option only allows that sale or, or transfer back to the owner or I guess friends and family. And so the USDA option was recommended and, uh, suggested by the, uh, interested parties, uh, so that's the one we're pushing forward, next please. Next please. So there are, uh, several versions of this. And we're looking at, at the various ones, this first one is a custom farm slaughter license. And these are mobile facilities, uh, next please. And, uh, the custom meat facility, there are some of those, uh, but again, they're, they seem to be more mobile than the others, and then the third is a custom slaughter establishment at a fixed location, next please. Uh, okay, we, we'll, uh, leave it at that. Uh, we are, uh, recommending to you that third alternative, uh, in the sense that uh, that provides a fixed location, uh, you've heard before, the conditions could include, for example, that a, a feedlot could not accompany this, so therefore there would be no large scale operation and that would be the limiting factor on the size of the facility. But other than that, it would provide, uh, you know, pretty much operational flexibility to the owner operator. And with that, we're, uh, welcome to take comments or discussion from the commission or the public.
Anything to move? Anyway. Uh, who wants to speak, someone in the audience, we have no one on the yellow slips. I've signed up. Um, anybody on? Fine.
No one with their hand up.
Okay.
I have. Go ahead. Uh, any regards to the, uh, the health department, the state level and so forth, is this compliant to their guidelines? As we would adopt.
In our, in our research, we have looked at both the state and the federal side of this, we will be writing those conditions to make sure they do comply with both, specifically the federal guidelines, but if there's anything from the state that accompanies that, uh, we'll make sure it's in compliance.
Cause I do realize that there's a lot of private cases of slaughter being taken place of a mobile. And I assume there's regulations that guide them.
Yes.
I saw, I mean, I'm just trying to understand the process, that's all I'm trying to do.
Yeah, and again, uh, much like the, uh, first person talking about the events, this is a new part of the code, we're not amending something that exists, we're creating something new. And we will do so in a way that, uh, provides agency review, including the state and federal, uh, agencies will have a chance to review the draft document. Uh, it will go to, uh, Department of Commerce, Department of Fish and Wildlife, PNR, and our old egg department. So it will have a fairly wide review of comments before it comes back to you.
Go ahead.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chesney, and I'm assuming that there are going to be like hours of operation, that assuming that it's transport, either picking up the animals and bringing them to the slaughterhouse or somebody bringing them to the slaughterhouse and is that seven days a week or? I'm not sure about that, and then, um, inspections and, uh, removal of with awful or carcasses or, or whatever is left over, um, and that would be an inspection process by, by United States Department of Agriculture?
Yes, the, the action that you would be recommending to the board is creating a zoning category that allows for the use to take place. The operational parameters of that are left to the operator or potentially, uh, hearing examiner, if, if that's an issue at a particular time. Any inspections on how that works would be on the appropriate regulator, which in this case would be USDA. That would not be a county function.
I feel like I missed the base here in this pre-base baseball game. Um, so we're, we're still working on the technical, technical law, the technical points of the process that we'll do in the future, is that correct?
Yes, we're, we are crafting, uh, zoning language for your consideration at the next meeting.
Okay, and the reason I.
And, and excuse me, the, that draft language is in your packet and is also posted on our web.
Okay, um, there has been conversations about prohibiting overnight keeping of livestock uh, as a condition to control the avoidance of feedlot. And, and, and I mentioned this at the last time this was discussed and I, I was looking for a definition and, and yesterday I just went to my base source of information, all things written somewhere to Google. And I, I've got some definitions of feedlots. And, and I would really appreciate it, I, I'll submit these to you guys to, to your processing, but, but, uh, And, and I would really appreciate it. I, I'll submit these to you guys to your processing, but, but. Feedlots start at a thousand head and they feed them for six months. And I hate to see us create a business. It's got a limitation on it that if the guy can't get the cattle all butchered that day, keeping them overnight. Violates his permit. And so I'd really like to make sure that we look at definitions. And, and I'm going to mention this too. It doesn't apply to this, but I think it applies to everything we do from now on. For those of you that don't know, Chevron was reversed. And, and I think that we as a, as a planned process. Need to be more careful in articulating what we allow and what we don't allow. So that it is clearer as it goes forward. But I just wanted to mention that because the regulations, I mean, overnight feeding, I, I've been a business too long to know that. You want that problem. You want to have too many cattle. And, and if you're going to spend the kind of money, it's going to take me one of these things up and I've heard upwards of a million dollars. To handle all of the issues that are involved. I'd like to make sure that it's, it doesn't pinch the operator.
Pete, we share that attitude. The intention is to create, yes, clear language so that it's understood. From the hearing examiner perspective of when that case is then adjudicated. We want to make it as easy for these operations to exist and, and flourish. The, the only issue has been one of scale. And rather than try to look at a number of head or, or operating hours that are limiting in some way. The request from the potential users is simply to, to say feedlots are prohibited. Maybe we need to nuance that a little bit. But it would not, in, in our minds, it would not prohibit, you know, limited overnight storage. If something ran out, if, if there was capacity and needed to happen, I don't see that being an issue. But the idea, as you said, feedlots are generally for a lot of kind of cattle.
Well, and it's a process too, that it is a process in the finishing of beef. The beef, the, everything I heard would, would be finished, ready for slaughter when it's taken to the slaughterhouse. And where the, the feedlot and the definition, it's typically a six month period where they're feeding them grain and fatten them up and getting them ready for.
Are we in compliance then as a guideline with the state? Does the state have some guidelines for slaughter?
They do, but we're, we're crafting this to meet the USDA guidelines primarily. We will make sure they coincide with the state guidelines. But this will be a USDA licensed facility, not a state licensed facility.
Thank you.
Mr. Chesney, I also have some concerns around the parameters of the future code. Would like four chicken and other. Animals be included in that slaughterhouse ability and is there a provision for concerns about water? Flucia or usage?
Yes, and some of those will be the criteria for USDA license, how that performs. At this stage, we have no interest in limiting it to beef. It is simply a processing facility. We're, we're going to provide at the starting point as broad and, and option as possible.
Thank you.
And there are a number of proposed factors in the draft here that talk about distance from water, distance from other occupied structures. Ways of protecting air and water quality. They're not, you know, totally manifested in code language yet. But I think that's what staff is working on and. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm ready, I'm ready to have this at a hearing and I support this. And I, I'm, I'm fine with Pete's suggestion that we need to define a feedlot because I too have no problem with like, you know, overnight or even. A week that need, that you need to store and feed an animal. But I still think that it makes the most sense as the limiting factor to ensure small scale. It's just a matter of defining feedlot in a way that's sensible and, and ensures that's the case without limiting. Activity that we do want to encourage.
I would have one of the comment. A processing plant and a slaughterhouse, I understand, I think that's different. Items. So I'm, when we're limited to. Slaughterhouses and not processing plants. Am I correct? I, I don't know. I'm just asking.
No, this, this started out, the title of this and the working hypothesis was a small scale meat processing facility. The definitions, as we've learned from USDA and others, generally refer to those as a slaughterhouse. So we're trying to merge the, the expectations with the existing definitions that are better, better understood. But it, it is more than simply a slaughterhouse. It would be a processing facility. That would ultimately result in packages of product that could be sold at retail or sold on premises, much like. A farmer's market.
Any more comments? Nothing? Anybody else for such a clever workshop? There's somebody right there. Do you need to speak to this?
Well, I just, I read this in preparation.
Please come down. You're welcome to speak. Come up. I didn't even give you the address and.
My name's Marilyn Darly. I live in eighteen fourteen West Bright with Wayne on the Five Mile Prairie. And I read this and I've had done some study over the years just as an interested consumer and concern about the environment. And so it seems like small scale. And I understand it sounds like you're working on the language. But defining small scale is really critically important. Considerations having to do with the environment, whether it's odor control, you know, air, water quality, soil quality. And, you know, if it's small scale, to me in my mind, based on what I've. Learned along the way, we're talking about, my concept is people who are raising livestock in a sustainable manner. And they want to be able to sell their product directly to the consumers. And so they would have the opportunity to do their processing of their livestock. Whether it's beef or chickens or turkeys or whatever, lambs. On, on their premises, but in a monitored and controlled manner. When I think of trucks bringing a hundred cattle in on a given property and then. Maybe having to store them for up to a week. That's a lot of, that's a lot of back and forth, a lot of transportation, a lot of dust. Potentially if it's not a paved road, just, I imagine the homeowners perhaps adjacent to. This type of operation, having this going, you know, define hours of operation. Is it twenty-four seven? Are there limits on operation? Are there limits on the numbers? Of livestock being brought in? When I think of small scale, I think in terms of those who are actually, you know, raising and growing and producing. On their own land and then, and then consumers can come in and buy and it can be processed there. So I think definitions are going to be really important going forward on this. Because I'm glad to know this isn't, they're not doing a final vote. That's when I read it, I was, I was a little like, some red flag concerns. So that's my take on this.
Thank you. Any well, something to say? Yes, sir. Shall we move on to the next workshop?
We shall. Tricia, this is a, a new issue for Spokane County. And not a new issue for the state. Again, we have some presentation materials for you that we'll bring up. But essentially what we're talking about is creating a new chapter, a new title in our code. That relates to utility scale, wind, renewable energy. Right now, the code is essentially silent on that. And we have been approached by several energy companies who are interested in doing business in Spokane County. We have been informed by landowners that they are signing preliminary agreements or, or something that looks like an option. That if something goes forward, they're, they're committing their land. And so we're looking at, at how to, how to bring this into Spokane County code. Next slide, please. And, and forgive some of the technical glitches we've got today. We're operating a kind of a hybrid system here this morning. So we've got some kind of basic principles that we started with. And you can see them here and, and right at the top is the most, probably the most important one. All of these have some impact on existing egg. The, what we've seen from energy companies and some of the landowners is. It is a kind of a swath of Spokane County from the southeast corner up through the. Almost kind of west of Fairchild, as Highway Two exits over into Lincoln County, is the preferred wind corridor. The vast majority of that is in agriculture. Certainly, the pelouse is heavily in egg. And these, by GMA standards, were obligated to protect our agricultural resources and also those farmers from encroachment. And, and then you see the airports, but also then the fourth point is equally important. This energy operation can provide a, I don't know if it would be substantial, but a, another income stream. For farmers and egg businesses, egg families. Who are always, you know, at this point dependent on the markets and, and today's price of grain versus tomorrow's price of grain. Do I store it? Do I take it to market? This would provide an income source that might help stabilize those farms in their primary purpose going into the future. And then wildlife protection, equally important, right in the heart of this kind of wind. Prime territory is the Turnbull National Wildlife Refuge. Migrating birds and windmills are not usually a good combination. And so trying to balance these protections is going to be very important. Next, please. So we're looking at a couple of possibilities or policies that would come in this. First one on the egg side. Discourage the permanent conversion of farmland. And that would be to say if, if a tower takes. A quarter of an acre and, and the rest of it isn't being disruptive. If someone has a thousand acres of land. And a hundred wind turbine go in there at a quarter acre a piece, that's probably not a big disruption of the egg side. And the offsetting income would probably cover the loss of the crops on that, on that thing, on the egg parts. And then, of course, the RGM requirements. Next, please. The airport's equally important, that the western side or the northwestern side of this prime area. Is absolutely in the flight patterns of Spokane International and importantly Fairchild. Fairchild, as you know, because of Spokane International, has very limited air traffic patterns. It all has to circle in from the north. They can't cross the airport, the civilian airport patterns. And so protecting their pattern routes and things is absolutely critical. And same with the civilian airport. Next, please. Renewable energy, we know, we all know, our governor has a major emphasis on. Increasing renewable energy for the state. There has been, and we'll get to it a little later, a state committee, the Energy Siting Facility Committee or called EFSEC. That comprises several of the departments, state level departments. They make recommendations to the governor on these large scale projects. So there's, we know there's an emphasis on this. We know that it's generally good for diversifying our power source. And so we want to balance that with the egg site. Next, please. And here's, you know, the economic benefit again. Trying to, trying to craft a regulatory process that encourages new energy production. But protects our farming community and ideally provides them with, as we said, an additional source of revenue. Is a, a critical element as well. Next, please. And then wildlife, things like wildlife corridors, what we sometimes call environmental corridors. Where we know there's migrating wildlife, both on the ground and. Air routes, so to speak, trying to identify those and place these facilities in a way that doesn't negatively impact. Next, please. So now we've got a couple of issues of how we move into this. You can see there's the, the EFSEC committee. Right, as we said, right now Spokane County is silent on our code. So we have nothing to offer somebody coming in. In theory, if someone came in and said, I have an application to put up a hundred windmills. We would say that's not allowed in our code because what we have is a code that says these are things that are allowed. If it's not there, it's not allowed. The EFSEC committee by statute is allowed to preempt local development regulations. So they, an applicant can go straight to the state in this case and say, we're not, we don't need to talk to Spokane County. We're going to do this on a state level. The issue is, you can see if there's a project in Spokane County. We have a seat at the table at EFSEC to participate in that discussion, but only one seat among, you know, eight or nine. What we're doing with this code is putting something on the books in Spokane County that, that memorializes. Your recommended public policy values in those basic principles and said, this is, if we're going to do this. Here's Spokane's position, even if it goes to the state and the government. Next, please. So this is, this is hard to see on the big screen. These slides and the staff report and the draft code is on our web and distributed so you can look at it. But it's looking at the, kind of the three processes that exist. One is the ecology's coordinated clean energy permit process. The second one is the EFSEC. And the third is local government process. So we're, we're outlining and comparing. Who has what kind of tasks and regulations and data requests. Next, please. So we're going to look through all of these issues. In the coming slides, but these are some of the, the basic metrics that we've been looking at. What is public safety? How did these, this system change over time? Setbacks are a big issue in every project we've studied in Woodburn County, in the coasts. Our team has looked at best practices nationally and internationally on, on how these things are happening. So we've got a very robust database of information to put together to make this happen. Environmental conditions, the visual resources, aviation safety and decommissioning. We, we want to look at, at how this ends because these are mechanical things that will wear out. Some will be replaced and some may in fact be de-commissioned. Next, please. So some basic ideas for public safety, you can see them here. Some of them. Look fairly obvious, but if they're not, you know, back to. Your, your cautions on the meat processing facility. Make it specific, make it clear so there, we know exactly what's happening. That's the goal of this is to drill down into the details and even the trivial things make clear in a conditional use permit that these are requirements. Next, please. Just some metrics here. In terms of height and you can see what's really interesting. A very significant increase in the height of these towers from kind of their early days in the late nineteen nineties to. Information we found in the last year or so. And this, that second point or third point outlines why. If you can put a bigger rotor on the turbine, you can generate more energy. Next, please. We've got a series here. It kind of shows how that pattern has changed. Over time from, you know, the, the late nineties at, you know, less than ninety feet. Out to almost three hundred feet for land-based towers today. Which as you can see is right, pretty much at the Statue of Liberty's torch. And that doesn't include the rotor itself. And then offshore ones are considerably higher, up to five hundred feet. And this shows how as that rotor diameter increases. You can see the scale on the left, the electrical generating capacity in megawatts. Has gone from a little over a single or one megawatt up to over three. So it is all but tripled. From a single tower, just by increasing the height and meeting with the height of the rotor. So from the fairly obvious conclusion is that pattern will continue. There, there's, there's certainly some limit on the size of that rotor from a very practical perspective. But there's no question that those larger facilities are. But there's no question that those larger facilities are more efficient at generating power. Next please. And this is a little hard to read. But it's essentially the the number of turbines and average capacity on one side, the hub height in the middle and the rotor diameter on the. Right, and again, just over time, even in the last ten years, you can see how they've all increased in production capability. Next please. So what are our basic findings? We are, there's been, there was some talk early on about should we limit the height of these? And our findings are suggesting no, that that should not be a limiting factor in a conditional use permit. Let the market decide how to deal with that. But have other, other parameters that take into account the increasing height on that. Next please. So most of that's going to relate to setbacks. Higher towers are going to suggest larger setbacks from other uses. And there, there's two reasons primarily. One is the operational impacts of those on their adjacent uses. And the other is the safety impact. There has to be a crumple zone. There has to be a. A place where if if the thing falls from, you know, not that, we don't have hurricanes, but. You know, who knows, a lightning strike or or something that would drop that turbine, there has to be room for it to fall in those setbacks in place. Next please. So and perhaps the first suggestion for minimum setbacks comes from several places. The American Planning Association has compiled quite a lot of data. We've also done some independent research. And we've looked around the state and you can see both this thousand foot setback is is something of a standard. The one and one and a half times safety setback. So if it's a three hundred foot, that would suggest, you know, maybe a five hundred foot setback. Or if it's the rotor, six hundred feet, you know, it might be a nine hundred foot setback and that's where the thousand foot benchmark sort of came in. And in two places that are possible. Adams County and Whitman County both have a similar multiple in terms of their setbacks from. And this setback is one of those first four. This is from an occupied building. This is primarily a safety. But you can see at the end. FSEC has actually put in some twenty five hundred foot setbacks since in a couple of projects have been approved. Next please. And so buildings, visual aesthetic setbacks, Adams County created a four times setback. And then here's the desert claim project on the twenty five hundred foot setback. There's been some court cases, or at least this one that we found. We'll be looking at those to provide some guidance on what we bring back before you. Next please. So how close should these be to the city limit or town limit of a place? Again, best practices, a thousand to two hundred, twelve hundred meters. So that's three thousand. Anywhere from three quarters of a mile, a mile away from an incorporated place is suggested. And then another court case that we're looking at for examples here is is on your screen. All of these will come back to you in in code language. In fact, you'll see a draft of this on the twenty ninth. Next please. Property lines, and this, this is referring to property lines of non participating landowners. So if, 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 if your farm has turbines and your farm does not. And you're choosing not to participate, we're suggesting we should have a setback from that property line that generally. Provides limited negative impact to the to your neighbors. Next please. We will be looking at the natural environment as we talked about habitat. Air corridors, wildlife corridors. We're looking at Department of Fish and Wildlife guidelines that are being discussed. Right now, our team is participating with those state level operations. Next please. And then visual impacts and resources. You can see, you know, some things seem fairly obvious again, you know, neutral covers. We're not painting these red. We're not putting. Advertising signs on them. We're not saying, you know, we're not going to paint a series of towers and say Budweiser on them, for example. Next please. And then noise and sound. There are operational noises. If you've been walking in or any proximity to these in your past, you you can hear them hum. As they move through the air. And and those have to be taken into account. Again, part of that is a setback issue. If you're moving something a thousand feet or more from an occupied place. Chances are that sound which diminishes at a logarithmic level as it leaves the source will diminish and probably not impact the. Neighbors negatively. Next please. And then something that probably. You, you haven't thought about, but we've discovered in our research is this idea of what's called shadow flicker. And if you think of that from an older fashioned floor fan. That might sit and you might be between, the fan might between be between you and a light bulb. And the fan is spinning. And your, your eye is seeing that flicker as it goes past the light bulb. That's exactly what this is doing. So if there's. If there's sunlight going through the rotor. And that rotor and that sunlight is affecting the neighbor's house, they're going to see that flicker as it goes. So. This is a parameter that we would consider, again, with those setback distances to try to minimize that or maybe limit it in some way. And what you see here are some best practices that we've discovered in other areas. Next please. And as we said, aviation safety. Both in flight patterns, but also radar and instrument landing systems. These are large metal structures. They can affect radar returns. They can sometimes affect transmissions from radio. And we'd want to make sure that they are protected from that. Next please.
You require, require red lights on top of these things?
Yes, yes. And what we've seen, there's a couple of ways of doing that. We've all seen the red lights on the top of old TV antennas before we all went to cable and streaming. Those are on constant. What we've seen is if you've got a field of these, it might be a hundred or two hundred units at night. And you, and you're in this rural area that's otherwise dark skies and you see this whole series of red lights all night. That's equally annoying. So there's been technology that can detect aircraft within three to, you know, two to three to five miles of. A tower and like runway, like automatic runway lights that you can sometimes click on with your microphone. The, the lights will pop off when they sense an aircraft in that area. So they come on only when there's traffic, they go off. So that you don't disturb your night skies and you don't, if you're, you know, if you're living in our bedrooms, looking out on a field, you don't see this. Hundreds of, you know, red lights flashing all night long. So yeah, there's, there's some really pretty advanced technology that can help that happen. And this is just a snippet from Benton County zoning code that we're looking at. Next please. Finally, decommissioning. We don't know the details of this, but we've looked at what we're seeing as some best practices, but the idea is to make sure that we have this. We know what it takes to decommission and remove one of these before the permit is issued to build. So there is an end game to this happen. And with that. We're happy to take some questions. This particular zoning text amendment, they said, came to us earlier in the year. From one of the commissioners. And we've been approached by energy companies. So this is on a fast track. We would expect the, we're, we're briefing the board on this on Monday. We're expecting them to formally initiate this as a zoning text amendment on Tuesday. And we will have a draft back to you for a decent iteration on August twenty ninth. Happy to talk questions both now and.
I have a question. Are, are we being mandated by the state to get this in place?
No.
Because of the energy codes coming up and so forth. I'm just trying to understand.
No, no, Clyde, we're not. We're in, in effect. I, I don't want to say we're, we're doing this as a defensive measure. But we're doing it because we don't have language to, to speak to this in our code now. Which means we have no ability to accept an application and try to influence it directly at Spokane County. It would go straight to the state, at which case we would lose control of everything.
What companies, what energy companies are the ones that have proposed this?
I, I can't disclose that today. They're national companies.
National companies, okay. And then how are the property initiatives companies that you want?
We don't know that either. What we have been told by a, a, a couple of property owners is that they have signed. What I call like an option to purchase. They have signed an agreement committing themselves to leasing their land for these if, if a site project happens. There's no commitment because of course right now there's no permitting system. But they're, they're, these companies are getting commitments from landowners that are interested in doing this. And it's not even, let's see where we are. The last map I saw was in late June. It had several dozen properties outlined that are already committed. So it is, it is a very much on our horizon. And again, it's, it's both a, it's the triggering mechanism because we know it's, it's something real coming our way that we're not prepared for. But as you saw in those principles. We want to support renewable energy, but we want to protect our egg resources and potentially provide this as an income source for those farmers. So they can stay in egg and not have to fight crop prices every year.
Are there some guidelines that you have presently in place for solar? That, again, is energy. That's the only reason of connection, not saying that.
Clyde, we've only got so many hours in the day here. We, I, I, my staff is incredible. They, they have done incredible work to pull this together, Joshua and Mark in particular. To make this, get this ready at this point. I have tasked him with creating a parallel process for solar because we have in fact talked to. Two major solar companies already this, this year. And that is a whole different effort. You know, a wind turbine, like I said, might take up a few hundred square yards once it's, it's constructed. A solar array of five thousand acres or more is going to cover wheat field. It, it is going to totally displace the egg side of the world. So it's a. It's on our horizon, but we're, we're taking it one step at a time.
My question is asking, because we allow a solar panel situation existing out in East Valley area. And it, there is no guidelines to that.
I, I would believe that. There's nothing in our code.
No, we used to share these quadrants, put these windows along. To the house and things that great.
They should, they should be able to coexist. There, there is a significant disruption during construction. Because these are, they are very large, heavy pieces of equipment. So the, the roads that have to be built into the fields are essentially a class one highways. Not to handle, you know, eighty thousand pound loads coming into the field. It can't be a dirt farm road. When those towers are constructed and operational, those roads have to be taken out and restored to essentially a pickup truck path to go through. So there's, there is that, you know, big disruption of farming during construction, but then some of that goes away because those roads are taken back out again.
Before we go to the script, we have someone wanting to testify.
Yes.
And chime in, and that's Michael Chambers. Michael, are you here? Would you please come down here and your time is up. We want you to come down here and follow this. You signed up talking about.
Yes, my name is Mike Chambers. I live in three, three, forty, four South Howe Avenue in Jean. I live in the rural traditional zone and I, I will be. Up front, I don't want the flicker and I don't want the noise. Because I live in an area that I like the. Decent, quieter farming community. But that's not my real concern today. My real concern is pertinent to what this could possibly do to these Snake River dams. And the reason I ask this question, and I want you to, as. People to do this, to look into this because there is a policy that allows. Wind and solar to take precedent over hydropower. Whenever wind and solar is producing. Which wind power typically produces the most energy in the spring of the year when the wind is blowing. Which is the same time that the dams are getting most water from the mountains, which potentially could generate power. So the, all of Bonneville is required to let. Wind have a priority on the national grid. Which I'm concerned that our governor and the policies that they're setting. Will use this as a strategy to make the dams look like they're not as important as they are. And so if you take the dams, the four lower dams, and you take them off production. It won't be that they can't make the power. It will be that they can't sell the power. And so somebody could easily in a legislature, in a policy decision, say, you don't really need those dams as much. Because they don't generate power. But the reality is the hydro dams on the Snake River are literally instantaneous almost. As far as supplying emergency and, and required power that we rely on Bonneville. Their surplus is twenty five percent comes from Snake River dams on that bump of power. And so the capacity of power that we could lose could be really substantial. And if the wind's not blowing. There's no power. And everyone I've talked to, I've talked to three different power companies about it. And they all said, this is a really huge concern because yes, we need more power. But is wind a viable way of doing that? Wind is a subsidized power. The government has to subsidize it in order for us to actually assemble and produce power from it. Whereas water power, the dams are already there. And they actually subsidize the community with irrigation, with electricity, with travel. The list is endless. In some of the midstream Columbia, they produce all of the. Energy hungry businesses have moved into those areas because of that cheap power. And so if we start to put a stranglehold because. The Olympia wants us to move into a green environment, which I'm not opposed to. But I'm concerned that they might use this in order to make an argument against what I think all of us realize is very important. Is the, the hydropower that we have here. I think over seventy five percent of inland power comes from hydro. And so if we start. Tweaking where or not, where that power is coming from, we could put ourselves in hurt. And so I'm just asking that you. Take that avenue as well and examine where that's going to go or how that could impact us in water. The dams are there. They will be there. Working, functioning for probably at least another hundred years. The turbines are fifteen to twenty five. And then we don't know for sure because they're new. So we don't know the impact they would impose upon us. We know the dams and they are doing wonderful things for the biggest concern, which is fish. I mean, Rocky Meese Dam put sixty million dollars into what we used to laugh when they call a water slide. To get the smoke back down the river. And they have like a ninety seven percent survival rate. With technology. So the dams can be worked into the proper aspect because they have the resource to do it. But the turbines are. They're gonna, I think they're gonna have detrimental, certainly on wildlife as far as birds. There's a lot of birds out running, eagles and osprey. They're, they're all the time. And they would just be slapped out of the sky. Anyway, if you take that into consideration, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
There was an article recently in the paper about how many billion birds are killed a year flying into buildings. And I really appreciate what you said. There's, there's no free lunch. Absolutely none. And we, we got energy price processes that we have to weigh in. I appreciate that kind of input because. There, there isn't any free lunch. I know just from my little, after I read that article, I realized how many birds fly into my windows in my house. And I don't know if it's, I'm more rural. I don't know if it's more because. And I don't know if it's just, I'm more rural. I don't know if it's more because I don't have houses all around us, but. But there's, I'm not against this. I'm just saying there's, there's a lot of stuff to consider not to take despite. And thank you for your comments.
Mr. Chesney, I appreciate um, this coming forward, but. My up for a question is that this is going to come back for our consideration in August twenty-nine?
Yes.
Is that a hearing?
That will be a public hearing.
Wow, that's pretty accelerated. Uh, okay, so got that out of the way. There are a lot of things to think about and I certainly appreciate the fact that if Spokane County doesn't put something into place. The state has something in place and the application can be made to them. And I've watched with interest what's happening with Kidde Cabs, who been county. Uh, our neighbors to the south, Oregon counties as well, on both sides of the Columbia Gorge. And I am a proponent of renewable energy. I guess I have to confront my own nimbyism. Uh, because I don't like the visual pollution and I know that there is noise pollution that's associated with it. And I do know that the construction of these locations has a significant impact on the landscape. You mentioned just what it is to get, get everything, the equipment in there. And then after that, it's a pickup. And somebody, you know, maintaining it. So there's not. Once they're constructed, there's not a whole lot of jobs created necessarily um, with these. There is energy created and yes, we are a power hungry nation. There's so uh, so much to think about in, in all of this. That I'm, I'm just concerned that we're not getting wide enough time to give it. Do consideration. And I understand there is a lot of pressure. Uh, and it is trying to take back that local aspect of control uh, where it's possible. So uh, I look forward to seeing more about this. In the next couple of weeks and uh, just considering some of this, yes, there are odd built uh, birds that are killed. What's on the ground, whatever populations that we have on the ground are really harmed by construction. The land doesn't always come back from that. So I think these are things that we need to think about on all sides of the environmental question, which is. Not just the renewable energy, it's what happens to the rest of the world around it. So thank you for your time and energy in this. And I appreciate the efforts of staff is making, it's like a lot of research is going into this.
Okay, thank you. And we share all of those concerns. We will be continuing our research, you know, forthwith. Uh, I'm very proud of our guys in the sense that they have been able to find best practices. Now, we don't have to invent research on our own. We can find things that work and have been tried and tested. We are in a situation of uh, not letting the perfect be the enemy of the good here. So, you know, like any ordinance, uh, we're trying to provide something that does provide best science, best practices from other areas. And recognizing that we will probably be somewhat unique in Spokane County. And we will have to amend and refine this ordinance as we go on. But that is precisely why it is on a fast track.
Mr. Chesney, I, I compliment you on moving forward with this and I hear what you're saying. I just don't want the state telling us what we should do here in Spokane. That's my approach. We may not be perfectly right, but I feel we're on the right track. We can amend it as we move along. So that's my. My personal feeling.
Mr. Chairman, that's all we have. More questions? This is a workshop. Anyone else want to?
Yeah, I mean, just generally I support this and I trust staff's judgment on what's the. Uh, best set of recommendations to um, you know, have it work as, as well as possible, but. I don't think that we're in the place to stand in the way of um, additional energy options. And so I'll be pretty supportive of um, whatever staff puts together here.
Thank you. No one else? I'm going to get wacko here, but uh, um. It seems to me that the next thing we ought to be looking at for energy is nuclear. And we're hearing conversations about. Suitcase nuclear power plants opposed to Hanford. And I, I guess this is just a question, is that on our, our horizon? Because um. I look at the free lunches and since to me nuclear's got more free lunch to it than windmills and dams and. Solar, just but any other source we have. I, I just curious as a, as, as, as. We're on the planning commission and you're on the planning staff. And energy is huge. Is, is that something that's? I guess, put on your philosopher, your, your professor's hat, is that on our horizon? Depends on how far off the horizon is. Uh, but no, we, we have been uh, we're aware of some potential. Not necessarily suitcase, but small scale nuclear facilities that are being proposed to be cited on the Hanford reservation. So it is an active conversation going on at the statewide level right now. Nothing proposed anywhere else in the state that we're aware of. But the idea would be to put uh, perhaps uh, more than a couple dozen of these smaller facilities. In that Hanford uh, federal reservation and use that as another energy source.
Alright. May I, may I say one more thing? Of course. There, just, just for your information. There, there is a fifty megawatt plant that is, has been talked about in Malaga. That is being backed by uh, Microsoft.
And where?
In Malaga, which is just south of Wenatchee and the old uh, uh. Aluminum plant down there, Arco or uh, in California. Yeah, Arco plant, because they shut that down. And down in that area, there's, the Rock Island Dam has uh, enough. Uh, facilities already accommodating that. So you might check that out because. They, I, I didn't look it up this month, but last month, they were right on the verge of their final test of. Fusion of three, I get what you mean, take the fuse, but the energy that is unlimited. And like you said, suitcase. I mean, it's a small application, but huge benefit. And if that happens. Pretty much, all energy will go to that because it's endless, endless. And doesn't take anything to do it.
This workshop is really being on fire. I appreciate everyone who's speaking. Thank you so much. Any other comments? Now that we're done, we can move forward. See, then we'll move to the next topic. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, last thing we have before you today is part of our comprehensive plan update. Specifically related to housing. Uh, as you may have remembered from uh, twenty twenty-two. We amended the countywide planning policies in anticipation of this twenty-sixth update. At that time, the housing chapter uh, of the countywide planning policies was put on hold. Because we saw the legislation was taking action to uh, add criteria to the Growth Management Act specifically related to housing. Since then, there have been several bills that have been passed. Uh, Commerce has provided some guidance on that. And so today we're going to share with you. Uh, a summary of uh, what those countywide planning policies would, may look like. And then we're looking for your comments and recommendations to take to the steering committee next week. And also we'll share some of what we are working on, on the actual allocation of uh, housing by income brackets. That is one of the requirements now of the Growth Management Act. Uh, to do that, uh, we do have a, uh, some slides to put out for you. And I'm going to uh, turn this over to my capable staff and they're going to walk you through this. Tate, Tate Andre will lead on.
Before we start, there's been a question uh, for five minute break. Thank you. More time, everybody. Uh, my understanding is that we're.
We're ready to go. Okay, we're back in session. Do you have the floor?
Again, we're gonna start with discussion of the housing element of the comprehensive plan. You know, turn it over to Tate.
Good morning. We had a presentation on the update of the countywide planning policies. They're gonna be brought up. If not, I can just talk about it.
Ron.
Ron, let me interrupt for just one second. Ron Valencia from the County Commissioners Office is helping us with the driving today. And I wanted to acknowledge the incredible role that he did. We called him late yesterday to see if he could help step in and facilitate this meeting. And not only is he doing so, he's doing so from Seattle. He's actually driving us remotely from Seattle. And so, Ron, thank you very much for your help.
Ron, there should be a PowerPoint, not the actual policy document.
Let me see if I received that.
PDF of the slide here. Okay. Ron, could you put up your tabs? I think maybe we can see, we saw it there. Okay.
There it is. Isn't that it?
Okay, I will have to just describe it.
That's fine. I mean, I can totally, that's totally.
Thank you, Ron.
So Scott already Scott already talked about why we're updating these, the SEO deferred these in 22 due to the new housing requirements. To recap what those are, it's planning for affordable housing for those income segments, documentation programs and actions for housing goals, identifying racially discriminatory policies and actions, and then providing for moderate densities of housing options in urban growth areas. So you've seen the draft version before. This is a new info to you all. But what's been added are new policy categories and policies that address those new housing requirements, guide the housing allocation process that we're currently going through, and then they provide a framework for all jurisdictions comprehensive plan updates. The biggest changes since the draft you have seen is the environmental sustainability category. It was removed and reserved for the upcoming climate resilience CPPs. The reason for that being is that much of the steering committee and the PTAC thought it was best to keep it comprehensive in that location. The monitor housing development category originally had suggested optional items to include in that monitoring program. But those were removed due to an upcoming Washington advice or Washington administrative code that is going to specifically address items in the monitoring housing program, and that was confirmed by Melissa from the Department of Commerce. The permanent supportive housing and the I'm sorry, I'm spacing that. The emergency shelters, there was a category for that. There was originally one policy in there that was removed and then had left the category empty, which we didn't like. So we added two more policies. Those will be policies 6.1 and 6.2. There should have been, by the way, the draft policies put in front of you so we can see which one I'm talking about. There were also general edits made to the content overall for clarity. One notable language edit was the change from special needs housing to vulnerable populations. Vulnerable populations is a term that's actually defined by the Washington state as groups at higher risk for poor health outcomes. So that captures like minority groups, low income populations, and those disproportionately impacted by environmental harms. So that's the update on the draft you have in front of you. I'm gonna recap the timeline for all of this. The first draft was produced in May, and this was edited iteratively through June to now. This was working with our planning technical advisory committee, both the full body and the subcommittee. We had the CPP subcommittee made up of steering committee members. And then this was also circulated to stakeholders and made available to the public through a website and then these workshops. In July, after the version you're seeing, we created draft 2.1, which was reviewed by the steering committee on July 17. After that meeting with the steering committee, we made edits to the draft and then recirculated it for feedback, and that takes us to where we are at now, which is draft version 2.2, which is the version you all have in front of you. Upcoming items is we have a Board of County Commissioners workshop and a steering committee workshop in August on the 20th and the 21st. Those are two separate workshops. Right now, we intend to complete the final draft right after those meetings, the next day in order to meet the recommendation date from the steering committee in September, which I believe is the 17th. And that puts us on track for the Board of County Commissioners' consideration in October. That is all I have for you. So we are open to questions. Oh, I am so sorry. There was a miscommunication on the housing allocation process, but that is also something that we can talk about in terms of that. Okay. Well, there is open questions for CPPs, then we'll move to the housing allocation. Apologies.
I've only read this about five times. And every time I read it, I feel like I am less prepared. And, and, and I've been at this a long time, and I've read a lot of stuff. Couple of questions that I have. There's some words, words that are included in your text, shall and should. Shall is a command. It is, that, that's something we have to do. When, when I see shall appear, is that because that's tied to the Growth Management Act in a specific section?
Correct. Yeah. Any shall statements are ones that are mandated from the state.
I want to make sure that the shoulds are recommended, recommended policy.
Yeah, shoulds are discretionary policies, so it's not required of a jurisdiction to do that. It's discretion, off their discretion. That's what the should statement is, and we have that term defined in our CPP glossary on what shall and should means specifically to.
Tell me again, when are we expected to pass that from the planning commission as a recommendation for the county?
Let, let me weigh in on this. This is not something that typically comes from the planning commission for acting. It's, it's before you today for your guidance to us. But the steering committee of elected officials will act on this, and they will make a recommendation directly to the Board of County Commissioners. So without being action item, it just seemed like
it was an impossible schedule to make a responsible recommendation based on potatoes.
And that's, again, we're, we're bringing it to you in in like what would be called a final draft form so that you have a full sense of what it is that has been discussed by the various planning groups around the county. And through the steering committee, there's, there's subcommittee that has looked at this, which has been through a quite extensive process. And we wanted you to have a chance to give us your comments, but it won't be an action item for you.
Okay, thank you.
Clarification is, is the mandate from the state, is that you shall write before your planning commission with recommendations? Or is it just to recommend?
I don't believe the state actually touches on that at all. We brought it to you so members of the public, members of the public can be involved, and say you might weigh in, but I don't believe the state weighs in one way or the other in terms of what a language role is in this, as far as people.
Okay.
Just trying to understand.
And, and to be clear, these are planning policies. They will result in comprehensive plan, language, goals, and policies that will come before you before your deliberation and act. And they will result in some development regulation, amendment for new codes that will also come to you. So this group is still very much in the path of, of how this is going to look for the county as a whole and how it's going to be implemented. It's that the, the interlocal agreement creating the steering committee gives them the recommending authority on the countywide planning policies themselves. That's a little bit kind of out of sync.
I was trying to figure how it's joined together.
Any other questions to you back? This is also open for public comment or questions as well.
I just want to say that I recognize the amount of work that staff has put into this. And I appreciate the fact changes that I've seen here. I thought that I was seeing more shells than should, which was one of the comments I had. I just felt like we're not gonna get, we're not gonna get there if we don't have a few shells in here. And then very small and maybe insignificant. I appreciate the version 2.2 in the, in the footer. But if you could put a date on it, that's really helpful to me. Just like, okay, so I, we finished writing this this morning, before you guys got here. So that would be, it's just helpful to me. But I do appreciate all the work and all the fact changes that I've seen here. I know that that's not easy to do with the rest of the workload that's going on. So I am interested in knowing how the CPP, any, for steering committee? How is this received? Was there a lot of angst or was there a lot of, this works?
So your, your question is kind of what, what temperature is the SEO towards these policies? We've gotten a lot of feedback from them. It's, it's kind of run the gamut. Commissioner Waldorf suggested some language for us to add. I can't remember all of it offhand. We've gotten feedback from Mayor Cooper, Medical Lake. There were suggestions from Commissioner, sorry, Councilman Cathcart. I don't know if I'm actually answering the question at all, but I think there's generally been a good amount of support for them. There's been there's been a good deal of feedback as well in terms of do this, don't do this, you know, and we've been able to factor that in. So I think we have a good path forward on these. Of course, I can speak for the steering committee. You will see how they how they interpret them at the next Wednesday's meeting. Yeah, I, I think we've got that forward. Hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Thank you. And that probably was not very politically correct to ask you that. I, in my, in my last go-round review, I was concerned about letting the smaller towns and unincorporated areas off the hook for trying to figure out the housing issues. I just felt like they're seeing a lot of growth, and that's gonna be really important in the next 20 years. So trying to make sure that everybody's sharing the, the load.
Yeah, language was adjusted based off that feedback. A lot of feedback to language changes was to address things like that or any confusion among like what we as the county do versus what jurisdictions do. So there was a lot, a lot of clarity, clarification in the language to adjust for things like that.
Thank you.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time or place for this question, but I'm asked this question a lot, and that is is what we've been building in Spokane for the last 50 years gonna be able to continue? And what I mean by that is the traditional 3.4 units per year for single-family lot. Are we gonna have, are, are we gonna, are we gonna allow in our expanded area places where because of a lot of circumstances, housing is more affordable to build? We have a owner that's a good friend of mine here that likes to only build on flat ground that's soft. But we're running out of flat ground that's soft since I did your growth fund. And if we're gonna offer traditional housing to Spokane residents, and I can tell you they want it. And then they're, they're a sizable part of our population. Is, is that gonna be provided or excluded, or how is that gonna be processed as we go forward?
Pete, it's a, it's a very good question. We will be very much market sensitive in how we are writing new development rates to implement this requirement from GMA and also to try to as we alluded to before, to try to encourage the building of neighborhoods instead of subdivisions.
Which I support, but that, believe me, I, but I'm just saying that.
Then, and, and that means, you know, a, a mix of uses that's allowed by right as opposed to separated by traditional or Ukrainians of it. So we're gonna be working with the home builders and others to talk about this and get their feedback and moving that forward. But it, it, it will be a market responsive, market sensitive part of developing code and, and plan language going forward. It's, it's not going to be a Seattle code.
I'm gonna kind of follow where Pete was going. And it's sort of because I caught it on the news the other night, like the city, the parking lots are not gonna be required for and all at once I thought, man, are we talking about affordable housing or what we've talked about pandemonium? And here all at once how do you sit in a meeting and have an open discussion between the county and the city and the jurisdiction? It just just hammers me on. I don't understand.
We, we will be working very closely with the city of Spokane and also the other communities as well to try to coordinate our comprehensive plan goals and policies. The idea of removing parking requirements from commercial development has been around for quite a while. And it's, it's been tried in other places. It's something that we will explore as well. Because it takes, it, it produces an inordinate expense of land for something that's only used a little bit of the day and not used for human use. Parking lots take up an enormous amount of time. When in, in a past life, as they say, the council president at the time and I were looking at a process of downtown Spokane of can we have a single project that takes every surface lot within the central business district and and markets that to a builder to build all of that at one time or build all, build all that in, in sequence, even if it was preserving some sort of below grade parking, which is very expensive. But we, we looked at that idea of, of can we repurpose these downtown parking lots? Obviously, it hasn't been going anywhere for about 10 years, but now they're taking another look at, at at using those lands.
I, I would like to be see the county be part of the leadership instead of the following of the because we have a lot more diversification to deal with. I know the county level and the city does because we don't have as close proximity of boundaries. And I'm, I'm just there's never an endless of things to be done, Scott. And I, and I'm just saying, when I read this and then I say, then I look at 3.5 jurisdictions to shall ensure the standards of existing and future developed regulations. Oh, wow. What big words to follow. But we shall. So I guess I'm gonna back up saying we shall have to deal with this.
Let me jump in here. Your remarks fairly complete, although your additional presentation. If anyone wants to speak here from the audience.
For, for CPPs, there's nothing for more from us on that. There is some discussion on the housing allocation planning tool that's separate from this. So we can, we can take.
Now, we can, we can take my first.
We have one from Becky Dicker. Becky, would you come down and for the record, state your name and your address, and thank you for coming.
Thank you, Becky. Hello, I'm Becky Dicker for Spokane City. I appreciate the explanation you just heard about how the language that's being struck here might be included in other areas, but that still concerns me because when you strike something, it might get lost. So I'm testifying today regarding policy topic seven, affordable housing. I am especially concerned about the striking of section nine, encourage promote environmental sustainability, especially tree canopy standards. Our county faces a crisis of housing, low income, affordable and missing middle housing. Advocates are working tirelessly to procure more housing that can serve the community members facing housing insecurity throughout our county. The physical structures are paramount, but the environment that surrounds those homes is also important. Urban force provide a variety of benefits to people, meaning their presence or absence can contribute to unequal outcomes in health, wealth, and overall well-being. Green space can help make low-income neighborhoods less vulnerable to climate and health risks by lowering temperatures, improving air quality, and mitigating flooding. They also play a part in reducing noise pollution and the overall health of every resident. Living in the upper northwest, we are aware of wildfire risk. We need to encourage environmental sustainability, not strike it out of our countywide planning policies. Environmentally sustainable building practices can help to minimize the loss of property and avoid dislocating families after natural disasters. Green space, which mitigates the impacts of air pollution, climate change, and flood explosion exposure, reduces heat waves in urban areas and less accessible in house and is less accessible in low-income housing. During the last two months, we have seen when a neighborhood lacks an urban force, how the ambient temperatures around those structures become life-threatening. The lack of mechanical cooling systems, air conditioning, and fans puts people at risk when they have no tree canopies, no natural protection from the solar rays. If you weren't paying attention in your high school biology class, you know that trees are natural air purifiers. They help to purify the water that feeds our rivers. They can supply food to other living organisms, including humans. Removing the support of the tree canopies in the growth management plan won't have lasting effects on the future of the neighborhoods and communities in Spokane County. I ask you to not remove the directive to encourage and promote environmental sustainability. And after hearing their presentation, I encourage you to make sure it ends up what they think it will. Thank you.
There, there may be questions. No, there may be questions.
I'm not used to questions. Yes.
Well, you did a great job. Thanks.
Thanks for coming down.
No question. Oh.
Pete always has questions. I've said, asked this question before. How do we solve affordable housing if we don't deal with transportation? That's, that's perfect.
Yes.
I visited two developments recently. One of them in the city and one of them right next door in the county. Another one out by Cheney. And there wasn't a single tree in the new developments in either the county or out by Cheney.
Which is a shame.
It, it is, it is more than a shame.
Yes.
And, and it, and it, it, it goes to the, to the look, but it goes to the long range shade that those trees will produce over the next 50 years. And I, I think that's something we haven't talked about, but I think we really need to address.
And that's why I was, yeah, that's why I was concerned about it being struck. Because as we've seen with the heat wave we've had, and we know through statistics, we know that the trees, when they are removed and replaced with cement, the ambient temperature does increase greatly. And we've now reached a point where it's hard for people who do not have adequate housing or adequate shelter to survive. And we've now reached a point where it's hard for people who do not have adequate housing or adequate shelter to survive. As far as transportation, there are many areas of our city, other than Lake Tahoe Valley, we do not have buses. There is nothing that comes out past, um, Sunset Avenue or the bridge to the Lake Tahoe Valley. And so as we keep seeing more and more pressure on the Lake Tahoe Valley, the fact that we have no public transportation makes it undesirable to affordable housing because not everyone who lives in affordable or low-income housing can afford their private transportation beyond a bicycle. Uh, we don't even have bicycle paths in Lake Tahoe Valley beyond the Spokane, um, Cheney shopping mall. You can ride a bike from Bigger Flats to the mall and that's it. Everything else, you are risking your life because we do not have bike paths and people who do bike talk about the winding roads, the, the blank curves that we have in the Lake Tahoe Valley, Volts and Eagle Ridge areas that are dangerous. So transportation within the city is more where more dense housing could be. There could be lack or limited parking areas if they have access to the public transportation. Um, affordable housing, low-income housing relies on being on the public transit lines. When it's not, then it makes it more difficult for those people to get around. I happen to be on board for one of the low-income housing here in Spokane City. And our residents fight for ways to be able to go someplace where there's food because there are not a lot of restaurant markets or, uh, farmers markets within the areas of low-income housing here within the downtown area. So they do struggle with that. And that's why we need to expand the ways that people are on low-income housing can access public transportation to transport their groceries. And you got me started, sorry.
Thank you. I had no support when you answered your question if you didn't need to touch.
No, that's been a while. Thank you.
Um, more, more comments, um, on this topic? We have the experts right here, the authors. Logan, you wanna hear from me? No? Okay.
Nothing. Just good work to the staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Logan.
If there's more questions.
Great. Uh, so I'm Bonger Thompson. I'll talk just kind of briefly about the housing allocation work we've been doing. Uh, we previewed this with you folks before. Um, the Department of Commerce developed a tool called the Housing for All Planning Tool. The kind of fact of the view is that's a way of just splitting up our population allocation into housing units. And then those housing units by, uh, income levels, so the zero to thirty percent area median income, thirty, fifty percent area median income, fifty, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, and we're not required to actually build this housing. What we have to do is have the zoning and development regulations in place that allow for this, uh, housing to be built. Excuse me. Uh, we've been moving forward with, uh, the County Advisory Committee and the Steering Committee on a methodology to allocate this housing. I think we're getting pretty close to zeroing in on something. Hopefully we'll have that done in the September, um, steering committee, but anyway, I can ramble on and on about this. I'll turn it over to the, to the commission if there are any questions on it. I can, I can get on for it.
I have a question. When will this be brought to its implementation for us to have a hearing? Or will that be, the, the countywide planning policies will be, uh, the public hearing houses will be?
Affordable housing.
Yeah, that's part of the countywide planning policies. The steering committee, uh, will be holding the public hearing for that and making a recommendation directly to the board. And on the housing allocations, those will come back, uh, as zoning and development rate revised by revisions or perhaps new code, and that will come to you for your recommendation.
So, thank you for that. Thank you for your work on this. Are the, have there been changes to the housing allocation formula here locally and is that online?
That's a good question. Uh, apologies for not elaborating on that. So the short answer is yes, there have been changes. Let me rephrase that. We've been looking into potential changes. The steering committee got us to examine the potential ways we could tweak the methodology to apply some more local data. So what, um, what we, mainly Kevin Fry bought out the city. He's been kind of spearheaded on this. We developed a methodology that takes into account the ratio of, um, I've actually turned it exactly where, uh, low-income jobs to low-income residents within certain jurisdictions. So if you have a jurisdiction that has, I'm gonna make up a crazy number, you know, a thousand uh, low-income jobs, but only one low-income resident, then you might say, oh, gosh, we need to increase the loan capacity here and then, you know, in the inverse, you might need to lower it. In any case, uh, we'll be previewing that before the steering committee this next Wednesday. I believe that will be the first time it's made. I'll be though, I don't, I can't recall if it's been posted online, uh, at this point, but nothing's been officially adopted or anything like that. We've just been kind of looking into things as the steering committee requests.
The, the spreadsheet that Bongos referring to, where this housing tool from Congress is on our web. Uh, there was an initial version by, that's anything that was the method B. Uh, and they were, uh, I can't remember, that's the C, which is anything else that you could defend. And that's when their steering or planning group has kind of tried to manipulate version A into something that has some local control, which would be a urgency. And as Bongos said, one of those was trying to better match jobs and, and housing, uh, even geography. Uh, we also looked at the transit option. Can we, can we have uh, this zoning take place around transit hubs? And if, if that option was pursued, that really puts it all into the two cities, into the two major cities rather than try to distribute that to the small towns and other things. So the transit option sort of went away for now. But, and this jobs to, uh, housing model is being proposed, at least for the steering committee's consideration. So, and the, the other thing that changed from the very beginning is that on that method A is the very low-income groups, uh, up to fifty percent of area median income are no longer being, uh, allocated to rural areas. You know, that, that income group made no sense to be putting out in rural areas that had none of the services that are necessary. So that was carved off, which means those all have to be now absorbed into the, uh, the rest of the UGIA.
Thank you.
Earlier I mentioned two words, shall and should. And, um, this is economics, not plan, use planning, but economics eliminates half our population from affordable housing. And if any of the references that we have in here become shalls as opposed to shoulds, what does that create? I mean, do, do we, do we pass something that says we can't do this, so what, what do we do? I mean, we got it. We got a housing crisis that's, it's beyond real. It's insane. And it's, it's frankly, to me, it's criminal. And I, and I think it's, it's our responsibility to, to really deal with that and um, I don't know where my grandkids are gonna live. I mean, I just don't know where they're gonna live. Uh, to, to buy a, uh, an affordable home today regarding about forty-seven dollars an hour of income? That's ridiculous. The, the seventy-dollar two-bedroom apartment takes, uh, about thirteen dollars an hour from two people just to pay the rent. Uh, and, and so, I mean, um, we, we got a problem here and, and a lot of it is, is not external to our regulations and how difficult we made it to get things out there that aren't directly tied to cost. And so I'm I'm staying in that band right there because we gotta provide housing to our people or we're not doing a service to anybody.
We agree, uh, this is a brand new state-level directive that we are trying to uh, adjust for Spokane County. Like most things in GMA, uh, maybe it's the incomplete step that has to take and some of which you've said into the full account. Uh, we, as we discover those flaws, we will be putting together initiatives for our own legislative team to say, okay, this was your intention. Here are some fatal flaws or here are some really dangerous parts of this. You either need to fix that or give us the flexibility to do so.
In our town.
Yeah, uh, because, you know, uh, our guys have been working with, uh, George and our community development housing side here at the county as well as the city. It's, it is clear that, you know, the, the, even the words affordable housing, as, as they've talked about, uh, is almost a missed over. It was like, there's no, there really is no such thing as affordable housing, right? And that means this is a regulatory step that allows for someone to try to build housing at a lower price point. It doesn't, uh, we, as we said, we're not building anything. We're not forcing anybody to build anything. We're creating a zone that allows for it to happen. Uh, or perhaps another way of looking at it from, you know, the HOA perspective is it prohibits you from discriminating against making it happen. But it's clear to us in this early stage that the actual construction of this is gonna have to be uh, in these early stages, it's gonna have to be something of a habitat for humanity or something where not-for-profit or some, some other economic tool that writes down part of the cost of this. Uh, it, it could be a land bank uh, that provides the land at no charge for, you know, thirty-five or fifty-five years. It takes that cost out of the equation. We're, we're identifying some of these options, but right, right now, those are not options that we have any control over. But in, in a pure real estate deal, uh, there has to be some write-down in here, in our, in our minds for this to work, for somebody else to put capital at risk in front of making a profit.
Thank you for that. I, I really appreciate it. I've said for years, years that incentives that go to developers that are building clearly unaffordable housing, luxury, wealthy housing is crazy. It's just crazy. And it's really poor policy, but that's what gets built. And then they get a tax incentive or exemption for it. And that's just morally and ethically wrong. So there needs to be disincentives and the carrots need to go to affordable housing to our community. What's affordable in Spokane is, we're not saying it's Seattle, Tacoma, or Portland, or whatever, although goodness knows, they've got their homeless issues as well. And people priced out of the market, whether it's rental or homeownership. The idea of homeownership as an American dream or way of life, if it hasn't disappeared yet, it's on its way out. And that's where those things need to happen. So there needs to be incentives that are pointed and reserved solely for affordable housing to our community. And disincentives that are pointed at luxury housing. What I call luxury is somebody that's able to just walk in and go in and pay seven percent interest rate or pay cash for the housing stock that we have or the land that we have left, which is diminished. Those were my two cents. Thank you for letting me put that in.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
I was just gonna pick up where she was on and where she, at the bus stop. Excuse me. I agree with where you were headed. But I'm also very concerned that locally, we have to deal with what the state has given us regulations that we shall abide by. We need, we need to have more involvement of the community to come forth with how do we find affordable housing. It's not up to us, is what I'm trying to say. I'm trying to put the responsibility back onto our community. They need to participate with us in establishing. There are choices that are being made that are mandated in planning, because I've got some subdivisions going on. Affordable housing, we wanna do it, but guess what? The mandates that are coming down from the state thinks they're gonna solve our problem is not solving our problem. I really have concerns about. I just want the fix picture to be what.
The vegetation does need to be like that because, I mean, they're taking away our natural gas. They're taking away everything that's driving the cost of all these homes and being built up. I'm a builder here in Spokane. I haven't raised my price since two thousand and twelve. I've absorbed so much of the cost. So we wanna talk about affordable housing. I'm still building at the same price and absorb it. And so we just keep getting mandated and dictated how we build over here when the West Side is a completely different atmosphere. We are a dry atmosphere over here and we get told on how we have to build.
I, 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 I agree with you. Sorry. That way.
Yeah, I, I remember on a, uh, story briefly, we have heard from, uh, members of the community and members of the public in terms of, you know, offering incentives for affordable housing or disincentives for, um, higher economy. We didn't include that in CPPs, um, because we don't want to, you know, apparently be bowling into jurisdictions and then doing X or Y's because we say so. But, uh, we're certainly going to come back with these CPPs as a framework and look at a range of different options and, you know, hopefully be able to arrive with some alternatives that will satisfy that's why. And, uh, with that, I guess I can see if there are any comments from the public, but I think we're.
Again, my name is Marilyn and I live in North Spokane up on Five Mile. And, um, just a couple of, of comments I'd like to make. I, I came down here with Becky and Jennifer because we've been involved for the last five or six years through an organization, multiple organizations actually, about concerns with affordable, habitable housing, um, for people. And I just spent this last weekend, um, with my youngest daughter who's got a job waiting for her at Problem Sacred Heart. She's taking a ten dollar a month pay cut to come from Swedish in Seattle to live here. Um, but nonetheless, we have apartment hunting and I can just affirm that, um, we're looking at fifty percent almost of her net wages going to housing if she can find something. So, um, and she's, you know, in her late thirties, she's worked, um, ever since she got out of high school and, um, you know, this is the reality. This is the reality for, um, educated, working, productive, young adults in our community. And, um, I, I just, you know, the, the thing about the environment, I did one of those Gonzaga Climate Institute ride-alongs a couple of summers ago with the tube in my, sticking up out of my car. And we happened, me and the gal I met who was the navigator, we, we drove around the Northwest Quadrant. So everywhere from Wellsley, uh, west up on Five Mile, up Indian Trail. And no surprise when the data came, came out, um, that the Northeast quadrant of Spokane County was, was the most lacking in, in green canopy. And, um, you know, there are, I've seen the data from the Climate Institute. It's like up to fifteen degrees hotter in areas that do not have adequate tree canopies. So, so that I wanted to comment on. And I, because I live out north, I go to the Costco off of Newport Highway. And I have seen all of those nice old ponderoses just completely cut down. I saw that, I couldn't figure out what was disturbing when I was at Lincoln and Nevada a few years ago. And it's like that whole area that used to be an insurance company on that big, um, nice green, all the trees, clear cut. I mean, just completely cut. And so disincentivizing that kind of development process, I think is, is one, uh, clue. And then also, like was said, it's, it's crazy. Uh, the cat's been out of the bag for a good twenty years. We, we should not be giving tax abatements, you know, to developers at all to, to build along any portion of the Spokane River or anything like that, and even learning about opportunity zones. Hey, I, I, I read in the paper a few years ago, that was based on low-income census data. Did it have anything at all to, to benefit the low-income people? For who, from who the data was collected from the census? No, what it, what those opportunity zones do along corridors like, like, uh, Broadway, Boone, uh, Monroe, North to Garland, all of the West Central area. What it does is it gives us safe to protect from having to pay capital gains tax if a developer wants, or an investor wants to put their money from a sale into, into an opportunity zone. So my, my conclusion in learning some of these things about housing is that we need habitable housing. I'm thankful for the registry that the city of Spokane has imposed because there are a lot of single-family homes for which there is absolutely no accounting for, for habitability and issues. And in this type rental market where you're under a one percent, you know, uh, that if you have a gripe about not having functioning water or water heater. that if you have a gripe about not having functioning water or water heater or whatever, uh, they just say, okay, well, here's your, here's your evi- your eviction notice. Get out, because I've got twelve other people, families, combined families who are in line to rent my, you know, my dumpy slumlord property. So that, that's the reality that so many people live with, if they can even maintain being housed. Um, we need, we need to, we need to look at this as a people, because this is a humanitarian crisis. It is definitely a humanitarian crisis and it's all over, it's not just Spokane. Work with the entities around here, please, with the regional housing authority. Because there are best practices that are being employed in lots of other communities. And we need to be forward thinking for sustainable, habitable housing for all people in our, in our community.
Yeah, thank you. Can I answer that one thought? I'm a L S B architect and I do understand each jurisdiction of the city of Spokane Valley, the county, the city of Spokane, Cheney, Millwood, they all have their own standards of canopy coverage that are set forth and each jurisdiction has to administer them. And that is a, a big issue and you have to understand where it's taking place at. Is it always just the county's problem? No, it's the jurisdictions within the county that has to administer that if I'm not in state, right Scott?
Yes.
So again, I'm just trying to help you to understand that it is.
Right, yeah. And even in our county, we are part of a greater whole in the state of Washington. And then we're part of a greater whole in the nation, all right? And there are a lot of things that do not, do not follow geopolitical boundaries. So we need to be thinking in a more holistic, not us and them, or that type of thing. Yeah, there's jurisdictions, there are ways to come to agreements that work for, for function, for the well being of everyone. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Chairman, just a one clarifying point, because it's, it's, I've come up quite a bit. The movement of some of the environmental issues out of the housing policy into an open space environment, uh, natural poli- uh, areas policy, uh, does not mean they're being given short shrift or anything else. We're moving them to strengthen, we're moving them into an area where we can add more to that. As we then build the comprehensive plan, and we talk about planning goals, policies and building these neighborhoods, all of those will be kind of synthesized into policy and goal statements. So we'll be talking about tree canopies, we'll be talking about energy conservation in the, in a broader context. But for the moment, in these various elements, we're isolating them where we think we can give them, uh, more promise. So there's no intention of moving them out, uh, it's moving them where we can make them stronger. With that, uh, we are done with our side here.
No staff report?
Well, brief staff report. Uh, we are, uh, making significant progress on our consulting team selection. We have made a selection on our climate and resiliency consultant. And we're negotiating a scope of work and a budget with them starting tomorrow. Uh, we hope to have them under contract by the end of the month, if at all possible. Uh, the contracting process itself takes a while here in the county, but we should have a, uh, have we called a letter of agreement by the end of the month. Uh, we are searching for our overall, or what I call our general planning consultant. Uh, we have solicited three additional firms to, uh, come in and talk about that. We're hoping to hear from them by the end of the week, or at least by next week. And again, if we can move that forward, uh, we'll be, you know, fully up and running with both our permanent staff as well as our, uh, professional assistant staff. Uh, the other main thing that we have accomplished is we have engaged our communications manager. And I'd like you to meet him, he's right here behind me. Um, Tom MacArthur has joined us, uh, from his role in consulting on public relations and media. He will be helping us in handling our communications role throughout the next two and a half years. Tom, could you say hi?
Certainly. My pleasure, thank you for the introduction, Scott. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to say good morning and introduce myself to the board. Uh, my name is Tom MacArthur, I first came to Spokane in nineteen seventy four, when my family came to visit Expo. And what's interesting in the irony of life is that just recently I concluded producing the Expo seventy four special for Spokane Public Television. And I put myself in it because I was there. So it's nice to be part of the history of this town, uh, but also part of its future. Uh, I've been communication support over the years, uh, to Spokane Public Television, to, uh, Spokane Mayor, our member in Congress, I hear in Eastern Washington. Uh, communication support to the Davenport Hotel, welcome care to the Worthy's Enterprise in downtown Spokane. That was just in one of the top ten hotels in the United States. Uh, we have a lot of reasons to be proud of this country. Uh, and I've tried to find the best way to focus voices for these different organizations as we try to share our story with the rest of the world. And, uh, thirty years ago, I had the opportunity to be communication support to their majesties, the King and Queen of Norway when they visited Seattle. Uh, and to use both my Norwegian language skills and English language skills. So I know what it is to translate and try to be translated and understand through different cultures and different views and different lenses on the world. Uh, we had some projects in the works with, um, Sandy at the, the Blacklands Newspaper before she, uh, had her untimely passing. Uh, so there are some things in the community that, that want to be out, that want to be going, that want to be heard. Uh, and to have an opportunity to work with Spokane County, give those voices a place to have a home. And that those voices ultimately can be homes, as we've been discussing here this morning. Not to have, uh, those who want to live here have a choice to live here, have an ability to live here. So, uh, I thank you for, uh, Scott's confidence in me and for the partnership that we'll enjoy over the next few years. And thank you for your work as Spokane County.
Thank you, along. Next, uh, you finish switching our staff report? We are, uh, uh, next order of business is, uh, adoption of amendments from July the eleventh. Those amendments have been included in your packet, hopefully you had time to be a look at them. Uh, are there any changes or deviations or mistakes in there? If not, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt those amendments. So, so we by Pete.
Second.
Second by Clyde Ozzy. Um, where for the, all those, uh, favor, I say hi. This minister here by Doc, next meeting will be August twenty ninth. Yeah, please.
Should we plan on lunch? Or is, are we gonna be done?
Uh, that's a good question, I would, on the effort of being conservative and safe, it could, we could go too noon or maybe a little after. There, there will be four zoning text amendments before you, for public hearings for each of them.
That's why I was.
And we'll be briefing you, uh, one last time on the comprehensive plan amendments, which will be before you for public hearing on September twelfth. So there's, it's a, it's a, it's the agenda.
My past experience of yours is even better yet. I think we should, I don't wanna rush through a lot of these subjects that we're gonna be talking about, and I don't think we will be done. I feel that way.
You're right.
Uh, I'm here planning on at least one thirty, two o'clock.
By the way, um, four hundred, I'll be in the most far state on the twenty nine. Uh, so I will not be here, I am considering joining by Zoom, because I would be part of the participants, I can't run the meeting from Zoom, but, uh, it would be good to hear, uh, uh, what goes on. So I could vote, uh, uh, very thoughtful issues.
We will put the meeting in the hands, capable hands of your executive office.
Yeah, I, I make a regret, said, and many of the board members would be here in, in present because it is a big item that we're talking about. I'd like to see, and I know sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, I'd like to see everybody be present at the house.
We will send out a reminder and emphasize, uh, that it will be a, a very interactive meeting.
Here, and a motion, sorry, to adjourn by your motion. I think I heard Melissa said that.
Yes.
Uh, that objection, so we're, if, uh, thank you everyone. Ron, thank you very much for helping us, appreciate it.
Happy to help.